I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Wilkinson, would you give us our opening statement?
Yes. Good evening. As Secretary of the Board of Education for Bloomfield, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our televised viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on in this evening have been posted as required by law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent alone. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorm and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it's legally mandated that proceedings are accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have asked for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I'm pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We're very proud of the school system, and thank you for your interest in Bloomfield Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Item number four A on our consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Fryman?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular board meeting as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved and second. Are there any edits? Or corrections? Any edits or corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. It is so ordered. Item number five, recognitions, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Awards. Dr. Thompson and principals.
Good evening. Members of the Board, colleagues, families, and our viewing audience joining us virtually. Over the last thirty-one years, we have participated in the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Award Program. This annual award program recognizes students in middle and high school who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. In order to qualify for the Superintendent's Award, students must demonstrate academic prowess, citizenship, and leadership while being active members in their community. These students are outstanding representatives of Bloomfield Public Schools and the community. We will begin the award presentation by wealthmaid, Mrs. Sarah Williams, Principal of Comedy Race Intermediate School.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Board Chair, Mr. Harris. I have two incredible students that I get to speak about this evening. We had many who were nominated by their teachers, but these two rose to the top. I'm going to first start with Ms. Dianrea Edwards. Dianrea is a student who leads by example. She is a good friend and is a helpful community member. She stands up for friends in social times of need. As a student, she is actively engaged in daily learning, asking questions, and she participates without any prompting. She's also a member of the Carmine Rice School softball team where she plays with much passion. Next, I have Ms. Abigail Palachi. And by the way, these are written by their teachers who nominated them. Abigail Palachi is an incredible young woman. She puts a hundred percent effort into every task she sets to accomplish. Abigail is someone her teachers can depend on in the classroom to set an example for her peers both academically and behaviorally. She completes all assignments to the best of her ability and is not hesitant to seek out assistance when she deems it to be beneficial to her. Abigail is the student that all teachers dream of teaching. She is also working as an active member of the community and works towards making the world a better place one day at a time. I am so proud of you both. Congratulations. And I'd like to now introduce Dr. Trevor Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent, Board Chair, Mr. Harris, and our viewing audience. I would like to first begin with our first recipient, Mrs. or Ms. Phoenix Wong Bird. Phoenix Wong Bird is a kind, compassionate, intuitive student who has been a tremendous asset to the seventh grade community this year. In a year when many students have presented with a heightened need of emotional support, Phoenix's weaker need offers support to her peers and has a calming influence when they are upset. She is a quiet leader in the classroom, showing respect to everyone around her, working hard, and achieving good grades. Though she listens more often than she speaks, Phoenix is not afraid to speak her mind when something is important to her, and she advocates in a powerful but respectful way. Activism is important to Phoenix, and in the future, she is interested in pursuing politics as well as entrepreneurial opportunities. Congratulations, Ms. Phoenix Wong Bird. Our next recipient is Mr. Vaughn Glanville. Vaughn is intellectually curious, empathetic, and leadership are just a few of the attributes that describe Vaughn Glanville. Vaughn is a young man who goes out of the way to be supportive to staff and his peers. Vaughn's motivation, attitude, and commitment is a role model for peers. With an interest in a career that helps others, Vaughn has been involved in a variety of community service projects around the greater Hartford area. He participates in a leadership group, and in his spare time, Vaughn composes music, plays basketball, and enjoys reading. Congratulations, Mr. Vaughn Glanville. At this time, I would like to introduce the Principal of Global Experience Magnet, Mr. Jeff Benabi.
Good evening to our viewing audience. Good evening to Dr. Thompson and to Board Chairman, Mr. Harris, and to all other Board members. It is my privilege to introduce a number of Global Experience Magnet School students and recognize them for their outstanding achievements and commitment to our community. First, I'd like to introduce sixth grader Gianna Edwards. She's from the town of Windsor. Gianna is a very studious and hardworking person. She will frequently go out of her way to assist her classmates with their assignments if she notices that they're struggling. She helps her peers without judgment and with the understanding that each person has their own strengths and areas to work on. She will take the time to break down an assignment for a classmate and ensure that they understand the material, even if it takes away from her own classwork time. She will still make sure to complete her own work before it's due. The next student that I'd like to recognize is Amy Rodriguez. She's an eighth grade student with us from the city of Hartford. Amy is a model student. She is always on tasks. She asks relevant questions to further explore our school topics. She helps other students to remain on tasks and helps other students to achieve their best in their own work. Other students know that she can help them if they're stuck on an assignment. She's also excelled in social connections, not only with students in her own cohort, but with students across the grades. She is a great reflection of the Gem's Way. Congratulations to both Gianna and Amy. Our two high school students I'd like to recognize are Will and Amari. Will Olnick is a grade eleven student from the town of Tallent. Will is academically capable in all classes. He boasts a three-point-eight GPA. He has already completed two college courses during his time in high school with us. As a quick learner, he's willing to help his classmates through the learning process. He is also active within the Gems community and is often an agent of positive change. He has been involved in the Gems Activism Club, the school yearbook, and never shies away from bringing a good idea to the principal. We look forward to his continued leadership as he starts his senior year. And finally, I'd like to recognize Amari Gary. She's our twelfth grader from the town of Windsor. Amari is a charismatic and fun student who has really grown in her seven years with Gems. I'm going to say that one more time. In her seven years with Gems, she's been with us the entire time. In her time with us, she has found her voice for social justice and is a leader and honor student in her marginalized voices class. She's involved in Gems Student Council. She's assisted in the planning of senior events this year, including the prom and the senior outing, and she even helped to emcee the Gems Variety Show. While we're a little bit sad to see Amari leave this year, we are absolutely thrilled that she's graduating and going on to continue to do great things beyond our walls. We are so proud of all that she has become. Congratulations to both Will and Amari. It's my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Bloomfield High School, Mr. Jesse White.
Thank you, Mr. Benabi. Good evening, Board Chair, Mr. Harris, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Thompson, and our Bloomfield family. Bloomfield High School would like to recognize four outstanding students tonight, the first of which is freshman Jada Foster. Jada Foster exemplifies maturity, character, and dedication to the community. She takes a rigorous course load and excels. She has earned the distinction of high honor roll each marking period her first year of high school. Jada is consistently prepared and engaged both in and out of the classroom. She has a strong interest in science and participates actively in the agri-science program. Outside of school, Jada is extremely involved in serving her local community, helping clean up the town, volunteering at a local food pantry, and volunteering in numerous clothing, toy, and food drives. Jada's dedication to her community and education is admirable. Congratulations, Jada. Next, we have Yolanda Grenau. Yolanda Grenau is more than just a high school honor roll student at Bloomfield High School. She was recently named Student of the Month for her actions both inside and outside of the classroom. Her leadership abilities shine through as a JROTC Let-Two student. She is an active member of the Harris Agri-science Center Program and Young Women's Leadership Group. Additionally, Yolanda serves as a mentor to students at CAMHS Weekly about agri-science and our world. She has made Bloomfield High School proud. Congratulations, Yolanda. Next, we have Mark Manson. Mark Manson is an extremely mature and driven student. He has achieved honor roll for the past two and a half years, all while volunteering at Bay State Medical Center and serving as a member of the Bloomfield Boys Cross Country and Track Teams and swimming for the Windsor Water Rats Swim Team. Mark also participates in Yukon's Medical Center's Junior Doctors Program. He always looks for opportunities for further growth and new learning. Teachers report that he is dependable and self-motivated, and Mark has a very bright future ahead of him. Congratulations, Mark. And last but not least is Jamari Simpson. Intelligent, soft-spoken, and modest serve to describe Jamari Simpson, the valedictorian of the Class of Two thousand and Twenty-two. This goal-oriented and intrinsically motivated scholar-athlete is committed to academic excellence. In the classroom, he is not afraid to challenge himself and has taken the most rigorous course offerings available to students throughout his high school career. Jamari is a role model who is well-respected and admired by his teachers and peers for his quiet leadership style, impeccable character, and sound judgment. Jamari will continue his education at Columbia University. Congratulations, Jamari. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to our award recipients and their families. We all share in the pride of your accomplishments. I think these talented students deserve a round of applause for their achievements and commitment to learning.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, and our principals. On behalf of the Board of Education, I can't tell you how proud I am to be associated with these young scholars. And and my congratulations goes out to each and every one of you and hopes that you will continue to stay here in the town of Bloomfield and as you move through the school system and and continue to do proud work that you've been doing. So those of you that are graduating, good luck. And then come back and see us. Come back and see us because you will be missed. Any Board members, Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the quick comment, I just want to congratulate all our CAP Award winners. I am so proud of you. We are all so proud of you. And as all the signs around town rightly state, thank you for choosing Bloomfield Schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on, item five B, Bloomfield High School Girls and Boys Outdoor Track. In case you may or may not have been paying attention, congratulations goes out to both of our high school boys and girls track and field teams. They each won the class C I A C Class S State Title last week. Both programs have continued a track and field dynasty in the state of Connecticut. And dynasty, I mean that with all, with every breath that I have. The girls' team, that's coached by Ann Burrows, have won thirteen of the past fourteen state titles. And that thirteen out of fourteen. The boys' team, coached by Garfield White, have won thirteen of the past fifteen state titles. And by accident, I guess, neither of the teams won this past year, but we know probably why. Everybody was going through COVID. And you know, but we have indeed a dynasty. We've got to figure out what we're going to do with banners in the gym because we're running out of space because of the track teams. So again, my congratulations to Ann and to Garfield and to the entire boys' and girls' track teams. This is Ms. Shonda Meyer. I know you're on the call somewhere. You want to add anything?
Hi, yes. Thank you, Mr. Harris, and I'll just add my own congratulations as the proud Athletic Director of the Bloomfield Warhawks. It was, like you said, last year was a tough year just because of all that went on with COVID. And I know that had a huge impact into our ability to train and to have all of our students here at school. So it did impact things, but not just for us. I will add that the girls also won the indoor state championship. If you guys recall, that was the twelfth in a row for them. And what was special about Tuesday, the thirty-first, when we had this track meet, the class of X, is that both teams won on the same day in the same place. So it was this orange, you know, all over the track, jumping and throwing and running on the track. And it was another great day to be a Warhawk, so it made me extremely proud. And, you know, Coach Garfield White and Ann Burrows and their staff, they're fantastic. You know, it's hard enough to win one championship, and anybody would tell you that. But for them to have, like you said, Mr. Harris, this dynasty just proves and the quality of coaching that they put together with their staffs every year. And it's a testament to the work they put in, the support we've gotten. We've got the new track, the orange-blue track that's been put in. So we appreciate the support. The weight room is a big part of that, too. So it's a team effort by everybody who helps this team do as well as they've done, that these teams do as well as they've done. And obviously, our athletes go on to perform at the next level, often getting, you know, money, full or partial scholarship to do so. And when they go to these colleges, we often hear back from them that what they experienced in high school was so much harder than what they're experiencing now in college. And so everybody wants, you know, the Warhawks. So I, again, can't be prouder. And like I said, Tuesday was another great day to be a Warhawk, so congratulations.
And congratulations to all. Thank you. Our student rep report from Bloomfield High School will be given today by Amira ETN Modest and Simone Dwyer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Simone Dwyer, and I am a junior at Bloomfield High School. The Connecticut High School Fine Arts Awards honors one visual and one performing art student from each high school in Connecticut. The visual arts recipient for BHS was Hunter Harvard, and the performing arts recipient was Jamari Simpson. Both young men were honored at a banquet at the AquaTurf on April fifth. The Believe Academy hosted their annual Unified Prom on May fourth in the gym at BHS. Live skills programs from Carmine Race, Avon, Canton, and Windsor Lots attended. Students volunteered their services to do makeup, help getting ready, food prep, and serving. It was a great experience for everyone involved. On May fifth, in the BHS Auditorium, underclassmen were inducted into the French and Spanish Honor Society. Lisandra Vasquez was also awarded as BHS' first-ever Connecticut Literacy Award for testing as proficient in both English and Spanish. Seniors were also awarded their graduation cords. Quarter three, honor roll students were awarded with an ice cream sundae truck. Two hundred and twenty students were awarded. This quarter, BHS had twenty-five more students make honor roll than quarter two. The event was so large, it had to be split into two days to accommodate all the honor roll recipients. BHS Student Council had a field day on May thirteenth, which involved activities both inside and outside for all students. The National Guard provided a bounce house challenge course, and there are plenty of fun activities for all students. The BHS Music Department had their first in-person concert on May nineteenth. The concert showcased the talents of many students in the band and choir. The Voice of Inspiration Choir closed the evening with a selection of solos from the graduating senior class. BHS hosted its first-ever Unified Sports Track Meet. Members of the girls' and boys' track team helped to run the meet, which included relays, softball toss, long jump, and more. BHS and Carmine Race both participated with East Hartford, Hillray, and Simsbury. BHS had its senior prom on May twentieth at the Farmington Club. It was great to be able to have a prom after two years. Everyone looked great and had a fun time. Seniors Alexander Cologne and Johnny Jones were named BHS C I A C Scholar Athletes at a banquet at the AquaTurf on May twenty-second. These top scholar athletes will be taking their academic and athletic talents to next level. Johnny's will compete for Radford University, and Alex will compete for Westwood State University. On May twenty-sixth, BHS senior student athletes announced where they will be attending college next year and competing at the next level. BHS had five boys scientists compete at the next level and one girl, four for track and field, and one for soccer and one for hockey. BHS held the International Culture Fair on May twenty-sixth. It was a great event showcasing the culture of our faculty and students through food, music, and literature. Many businesses from around the town also attended and contributed to the event. On May thirty-first, the Boys and Girls Track Team both won the Class S State Championship. The boys defeated Hillray eighty-one point five to sixty-four, and the girls defeated Somers one-twenty-two point five to fifty-nine. Coming up at BHS, annual Silaskic Award Ceremony, June eighth at six P M. BHS Retirement Celebration, June eighth at one o'clock P M. Spring Sports Banquet, June ninth at five-thirty P M. Senior Breakfast and Graduation Rehearsal, June tenth at ten o'clock A M. Graduation, June thirteenth at ten o'clock A M. at the Duncan Donuts Park. Final exams will be held June thirteenth through the seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our student presenters? Thank you, Amira and Simone. Item number seven, public PTO comment. You have two ways that if you wish to comment. You can either use the your computer under the reactions and raise your hand, or you can enter a comment in the chat box. And if you choose to raise your hand to speak, you will be allotted two minutes to do so for board policy. Are there any wishes for public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay.
Sorry. Sorry to cut you off. This is Christian Williston here. I just want to say that
Hold on, sir. You wish to make a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, give us your name and your address, please.
Okay, this is Christian Williston. I'm on ninety-nine Rockwell Avenue. Yeah, and I just wanted to say that.
Please proceed.
Okay, so I just want to say that for the class, for the boys' track team, that we couldn't have done a lot of the stuff that we did without the help of Coach Yolanda and Coach M. White, so I just wanted to shout out them. There's not really much complaints about the school. We love what we do here at Bloomfield, and I'm just glad to be a part of everything at the school. I think we're going to do amazing things. Even as I'm gone, I'm still going to come back. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christian. Anyone else? Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, the district, in collaboration with the State Office of Early Childhood, will be increasing the number of preschool seats available to Bloomfield families. This is a significant new development for our district and strengthens our effort to promote and expand early childhood development. There will be fourteen new pre-K seats. The pre-K classroom will be located at Laurel Elementary School. Also coming the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, the district is launching a Laurel School Literacy Academy focusing on reading and comprehension. The new academy will support our goal of having all students reading on grade level or above by grade three. In keeping with the literacy theme, Laurel School has launched a Little Free Library Program on its campus. The Little Free Library is designed to promote early literacy, independent reading, and family engagement. The idea, which originated from the school's PTO, is for families to have twenty-four-hour access to children's books donated by the Plaza Public Library in the community. The book drop and container are located outside the school. Partnerships. The district, in collaboration with Goodwin University Capital Workforce Partners in the town of Bloomfield, is providing for the first time a paid summer jobs training program for about twenty graduating seniors. Participants will take courses at Goodwin and get hands-on training in high-tech manufacturing, leadership, and teamwork. They will also have the opportunity to earn college credits. Graduations. June is also a graduation month. Both Bloomfield High School and Global Experience Madison School will conduct graduation ceremonies on Monday, June thirteenth. The Bloomfield High School ceremony will be held at ten A M. at Duncan Donuts Park in Hartford. Global Experience Madison School ceremony will be held at three P M. at Bloomfield High School Courtyard. Tonight is our last regular board meeting until September. I would like to wish our staff, students and families a safe and restful summer. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Thompson? Any questions, board members? Okay, financial report, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, this report is as of June third, twenty twenty-two. At this time, approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars or point six-two percent remains in the budget. You will note on this one page summary report that the tuition major account zero eight remains in deficit of approximately seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The deficit in this account has decreased by approximately two hundred thousand dollars from last month's report because the excess cost grant receivable of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars was posted to the account. On page one of the detailed report, we have several, uh, subaccounts that have deficits. Account one-one-one-five salaries. Uh, and admin is over budget by twelve hundred twelve thousand dollars due to staff changes in that line. On page two of the detailed report, accounts one-two-seven-zero and one-two-eight-zero salaries for monitors and for support staff remains over expended because of non-salary, non-certified substitutes we have had to hire during the fiscal year. Also on page two, account one-two-nine-zero support overtime remains over budget because of custodial and maintenance overtime due to inclement weather this past winter. And on, also on page two, account two-two-zero-zero, Social Security has a deficit of seventy-four thousand one hundred dollars because of unanticipated retirements that resulted in unanticipated social security payments above what was originally budgeted. And finally, on page four of the detailed report, you'll note, you'll note that the three tuition subaccounts continue to be over budget. These deficits will be offset by available balances in other accounts. At this time, we continue to close out the fiscal year asking cost center managers to review their open purchase orders and encumbrances. Mr. Harris, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Board members have seen this at their committee meetings last week, but are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Item nine, old business, um, policy for second reading. Uh, Title Nine Personnel Students.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, this revised, uh, policy has been reviewed initially by the Policy Committee on April twenty-sixth. Um, thereafter, it went to the Board of Education for an initial reading by the board on May tenth. The Policy Committee met again on May twenty-fourth to review this policy. And tonight it's on the agenda for hopefully, um, passage. The Office of Civil Rights in November of twenty eighteen proposed new rules to amend Title Nine Regulations. These regulations became effective on August of twenty twenty. The new regulations define sexual harassment as conduct on the basis of sex that meets one of more of the conditions that are listed on page two, one and two of the policy. Districts are required to respond promptly in a manner that is not deliberately indifferent. And the new provision requires any employee receives a report of prohibitive conduct based on sex to notify the Title Nine Coordinator. The new provisions directs the superintendent to develop Title Nine formal complaint process that complies with the elements of this regulation. Uh, Title Nine Coordinator for the district is Mr. Maletti, the H R Director. The final rule allows parents or guardians of K twelve students to file complaints on their behalf. And employees in the district should be trained to recognize potential sexual harassment. Title Nine Coordinators and other employee involved in a formal complaint process must also be trained. Uh, this policy, um, is from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, a model, their model policy, uh, office, and, uh, we're recommending approval of this policy.
Mr. Fragman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of policy four thousand point one slash fifty-one forty-five point four four four, Title Nine personnel slash students.
Again.
Properly moved in second. Any, uh, any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. It is so ordered. I thank you. New business, uh, item A, Summer Programs at Bloomfield High School. Uh, Principal White.
Thank you so much, Chairman Harris. Uh, just a brief overview of some of the things that we have going on this summer at Bloomfield High School. Uh, this summer we will offer, uh, a myriad of programs, uh, one of which will be a traditional summer school, which includes credit recovery and acceleration for up to one credit for students, uh, who are currently in grades nine through eleven. Some of the courses that are going to be offered are Algebra One, Algebra Two, Probability and Statistics, English for Grade Nine, English for Grade Ten, U S History, Modern World History, Integrated Science, Biology and Spanish. Uh, the dates for the program are going to be July eleventh through the twenty-ninth. Um, we're also going to offer for our incoming freshmen, uh, a BHS Bridge or Summer Academy. Uh, for these students, the students will earn valuable experience navigating the building, working with their future teachers and acquainting themselves to the rigors of high school. Um, students can earn one-half of an elective credit. The focus will be on English, math, graphic design, financial literacy and wellness. Our summer, uh, our students are also going to be required to read, uh, Twice Toward Justice. Uh, the thematic, we're gonna have a thematic curriculum with an experiential component, which is focused on entrepreneurship. At the close of the program, uh, students will have created a presentation that showcases their understanding of literacy, numeracy, graphic design, finance and wellness as it relates to entrepreneurship. Um, again, this program is going to be from July eleventh to the twenty-ninth. Transportation is going to be provided to and from Bloomfield High School. Breakfast and lunch are going to be, uh, served daily free of charge. And for our graduating eighth graders, we're going to give them some, some treats at their graduation. Um, and in that packet that they'll get, they'll receive a, uh, postcard from us. I'm just saying greetings as well as a little bit about the summer program.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Special education highlights, Wendy Shepherd Banish.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Harris. Good evening, board members, the rest of the Bloomfield viewing audience. I'm excited this evening to put my real hat on and share with all of you some highlights from the Support Services Department. So just gonna turn the screen around very quickly. So, um, as we know, the, the portrait of our graduate promises, um, post-secondary goals and dreams and uh, thriving ability to have meaningful commitment to the community and our post-secondary goals for all of our students. So underneath, um, Support Services, this of course is in legislation with transition services and underneath that guidance, we have learned, right, to embrace the exceptionalities of our students in order to best program for them to really capitalize and build on their strengths. We saw that in some of the presentations tonight. I'm so excited. Um, we want to ensure inclusive opportunities, make opportunities for independent living skills, work on our students with their employment and their soft skills. And then most importantly, you know, for whole, remember, remembering the whole student, we also want to make sure that our students are able to have, um, whole and full recreational life and, and family life. Um, so with that, we want to introduce to you this evening, um, a new, um, facet of our Support Services Department called the Wish Academy, where independent skill building happens. And I'm going to introduce to you now, uh, Tracy Sted, our district-wide occupational therapist, who has spearheaded this program.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, um, Board Chair, Mr. Harris, Dr. Thompson, uh, faculty and parents and community. Um, so I'm Tracy Sted. As Wendy Banish mentioned, I've been in district for twenty years. Uh, so I really feel like I have grown with the community and with my students. And this is a, uh, project out of, that came out of a passion to provide an overall program to meet the needs of the kids, which is a program that aims to enrich, embed, engage and empower our students. It was initially developed to coordinate with our Dream Academy Life Skills Program at Carmen Aries Intermediate and Middle School and was expanded to other students in the buildings as well as steps. Um, it incorporates goals and objectives by providing functional, hands-on experiences and opportunities. And it's differentiated to meet the students where they are. Um, and ultimately, the goal is for students to see their own potential, gain skills in a positive environment. In addition, it aligns to a portrait of a graduate, the collaborative and proactive solutions, social emotional learning, positive school and climate alignment to the secondary transition planning for, from adult to school life. We use the Unified Sports Model and it serves as a continuum of support from general education through SRBI and special education. Um, overview, we have the Wish Cafe, which we will be highlighting tonight. There's some other centers in our Wish Classroom. We have student jobs, sensory station, for motor brake center, office center, home living, task completion and independent work center. And these are just so, the images unfortunately are not showing up, but it had some pictures of what the different centers look like. Um, so I guess we could move on.
I can see them on my end.
Uh, now I see them. Uh, so we have our independent work centers. Ultimately, we want our students to learn how to be independent thinkers and, and learners and to work independently, not just along with adult support. And so that's what the first center promotes. Uh, the Office Center is working on some pre-vocational type tasks and the Home Living Center is incorporating some of that independent daily living, um, self-help skills.
So I see sample skills embedded with the Wish program. Is that the slide that's up, Tracy?
I do not see that slide, but I could, um, I could still talk to it even though I don't see it. So I'm not sure what the rest of everyone is seeing. Oh, now I'm starting to see that one. Oh, we somehow skipped that. I don't see that slide. It says, we meet our Wish Cafe teams, but I could ad lib. Um, so some of the sample skills that our team and our students address, uh, so we, very much as I said, it's about enriching and embedding the academic component of a student's day and their I E P or for our students who don't have I E Ps just to really meet those foundational needs and for them to have a practical, hands-on experiential opportunity to, um, implement their reading, their writing, their numeracy, their social skills, their collaboration, their executive functioning. Um, so, uh, very much it's taking all the components of a child and looking at them, not just as a, as a one singular unit, but looking at the holistic individual and it's taking their strengths. It's very strength-based and taking their strengths into consideration while also meeting their needs through differentiated instruction and application of, um, different tools and materials. And here's some of our, uh, team members. Um, I'm very proud of them. These students have worked very hard, very diligent. Uh, we have students of all different ages, uh, from fifth grade through eighth grade. And as you can see, they are smiling. I think the best part about this is that, um, they gain the opportunity to really know what their self-worth is and know that they could apply the skills that they've learned and that they are valuable members of our school community. I'm very proud of them. Um, some potential opportunities for expansion is to identify some selected students and identified by staff as pure role models to participate as we move forward. Um, select some students that identified by staff that may need an opportunity to feel valued and productive while at school. We know that unfortunately, we do have a few students where school is not their thing. And if we could find a way and a format and an opportunity for them to really feel valued and, um, feel like they could contribute to our community, uh, then hopefully we'll, they'll then be a part of the bigger academic community as well. Uh, some of our tag students incorporating the tag program and have an opportunity again as pure role models, increase the participation of some students in the steps program, utilize the program to address secondary transition planning required by, for all students with I E Ps by age fourteen and utilize Wish to develop in-house internships and pre-vocational experiences with all students. And many of these align with, um, those first, when that first slide, when I said, talked about the portrait of a graduate, et cetera.
And so in closing, just a couple of more, um, highlights from some activities that our students from Dream Academy and Believe Academy have enjoyed this year and to celebrate, um, A-Race, for their first time, hosted a C I A C basketball tournament right there at A-Race and it, there, um, spurred a lot of excitement and hopefulness that A-Race will host more of those events. The Warhawks at BHS, um, competed in a total of ten tournaments this year, which is unprecedented for our year. And they were even, um, honored by participating at the Mohegan Sun along with our, um, our basketball team for the championship game. And they, of course, played in the championship game at the Mohegan Sun. Um, we've recently been invited by the Special Olympics and Connecticut, Connecticut Air for our, uh, BHS Warhawk.
Think she froze.
We lost you, Wendy.
Questions?
Okay. You're back. Okay, is that completed?
All set.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions? For Wendy or Tracy? Any questions, board members? Yes, Ms. Easeman?
Not a question, just a comment. Um, it just warms my heart to see, um, you know, the, the Special Olympics that were happening and all the activities that the children are, um, taking part in. It's, it's just wonderful to see. Um, it really helps with morale. It really makes them, you know, feel part of, you know, our Bloomfield family as they should. Um, so just great job with all of that, um, in all the programs that we have for them right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. New policy, policy for initial reading, Talented and Gifted Students Program. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Revisions to this policy, uh, were mandated by Public Act twenty-one-one-nine-nine and Act Concerning Various Revisions and Additions to the Statute Relating to Education. This, the Boards of Education are required to pass a policy for the equitable identification of talented and gifted students. The policy shall require the use of multiple methods of identification of gifted. The policy shall require the use of multiple methods of identification of gifted. And talented students that are in compliance with the guidance provided by the State Department of Education. Law and regulations governing gifted and talented education are embedded within those that pertain to special education. In Connecticut. The. Districts are required and mandated to have a process for the referral. Identification and evaluation of public school students enrolled in grades K through twelve as talented and gifted. The Planning and Placement Team is required to be used to evaluate and identify talented and gifted children. Parents must be provided written notice of that their child has been referred to the Planning and Placement Team. For consideration. As a talented and gifted child. This is a mandated policy. The revisions that you see in front of you are. Recommended by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Policy Development Office. And as, uh. Mrs. Cullen mentioned at the Policy Committee meeting that we had on May twenty-fourth in the initial reading of this policy. The Talented and Gifted Program that is underway in the district, uh, meets all the requirements of this policy. That is my presentation, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Now again, we will see this, uh. This policy three more times, but are there any questions from the board? Any questions? Okay. Item eleven, Cave Updates. Outside of the end of the year. Things that are happening. I'll be in attendance at a cave meeting tomorrow, uh, between Cave and Caps. Association of Public School Superintendents, talking about the convention next November. In. August, I will be attending a leadership conference. At the wrong time of the year in San Antonio, Texas. So, uh, it's, it's gonna be a little too hot down there for me, but, uh. I will be in, uh, in attendance at that conference. The Cave is sending me on. They're also sending me to, uh. A conference in Miami. Cube, the Council of Urban Boards of Education, uh, two-day conference there in, uh. Early September, so, um. And I think I mentioned it the last meeting, but, uh, Bob Raider, the longtime, uh. CEO of Cave is retiring, uh, effective June thirtieth. And he will be replaced by, uh. Patrice McCarthy, who has served as the Deputy Director for. Twenty-five years, so. New leadership coming on board. Board comments, Mr. Ike?
Happy Birthday, Mr. Chairman. You're world traveler. You're all over the place. Hey, this is, uh, as always, June, May, June, they're all special board meetings. But it's very special. We recognize academic achievement. Uh, had the privilege and I want to thank the district. We conducted voter registration activities per Connecticut statutes in all the public high schools in Bloomfield. But we were at Bloomfield High School, um, uh, last Wednesday. And we were met by the Chief Academic Officer. She, she, she was going into the building. Stacy McCann, when we arrived, and I thought she was gonna go check into the office. She went boom, straight to the hallways and all the students knew her. She just went straight to the hallways and all the students knew her. Students, we didn't do it last year at the high school because of COVID. Students were orderly. They were just regular students. You have, you hear all these bad things about, about the schools. The students were just chilled. They were, they were polite. They were respectful. It was just regular students, just regular students. So it was a pleasure. With, uh, Principal White's leadership. There was a, a, a situation where it was a young man and his, um, I guess his significant other. But the staff, they were sitting there with the staff and, you know, boyfriend girlfriend type issue. The staff was, was exceptional the way they handled it, uh, the way to let the young man vent. And, and it was just, it was, it was just enjoyable to be there that morning in the cafeteria registering students to vote. Again, thank you. It's, it's now June. Uh, we had a good year. Thank you for everything. Uh, it's, it's been enjoyable. And I wish everybody a happy summer. Congratulations to all our, again, to all our, um, awardees. All our Caps and Caves for last month and this month. Hey, have a good summer. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Ike. Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore? Has he left us?
He is still on, but he may not be able to unmute himself. He might be joining by a phone, so. Oh, there he is, yep.
Now I hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Set start over?
Huh? Yeah, start over, please.
Oh, I was just, I was just saying congratulations to all our, um, award winners. And, uh, again, happy birthday to you, Mr. Harris. And I wanna, um. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody hopefully again in September in person, but if not, whenever we can get together again. Thank you.
This Bogalass guy.
Yes, let me, uh, say congratulations to all of the, uh, student awardees. Very proud of them. And I, uh, heard that we had an extension, I guess. In the number of, uh, students who are on the honor roll this year. I think that, uh, we need to continue going in that direction. So congratulations to the various principals and teachers and students themselves. Who contributed to that. And I wish everybody a wonderful. Uneventful, health-wise, uh, summer. Just enjoy the summer. I'm certainly looking forward to doing that. Happy Earth Day, Mr. Harris. I was not aware that it's your, your born day, as they say. So happy Earth Day to you and I will see my board member colleagues again in a few days.
Thank you. Ms. Eastman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to say congratulations to all of the, um, awardees tonight. I'm always happy that, you know, we get to celebrate, um, our students' success in athletics and academics. That's one thing, you know, Bloomfield does well is celebrate our students and I'd like to see us continue to do that. Last week I attended the, um, the Music and Arts Festival, um, that our students put on and it was phenomenal. I know there were a couple other board members there. It was so wonderful. Um, so kudos to everyone involved in getting that together. The bands, the choirs, the, all the artists. It was, it was truly a great event to attend. Again, the Portrait of a Graduate, I'm happy to see that it's starting to come together and everything is. You know, we're starting to see the vision a little more clear now. Um, looking forward to, you know, the data that's gonna come out of this. Just to show that, um, you know, we're making progress with our students and that this is time well spent, which I'm sure it is. So looking forward to that. Everyone have a fantastic summer. Enjoy life. Happy birthday, Mr. Harris. Everyone just have a great evening. Thank you.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, also happy birthday, Mr. Chair. I also want to congratulate all the awardees this, uh, this evening and, um, congratulations on all of your accomplishments. Um, I will say that we have a, we've had a phenomenal year this year. Um, I'm looking forward to, um, you know, working with everybody in the upcoming year. I also want to congratulate all of the, um, graduates who are gonna be graduating, um, in a couple days. I'm looking forward to that and also, uh, to just really, um, highlight, uh, the, the, um, the, the concert. That took place at Bloomfield High School a couple weeks ago. I was there. It was phenomenal, I believe. You know, the choir director, Aubrey Salters, did a wonderful job as well as the bandleader. I, I can't recall his name off the top of my head, um, but he did a phenomenal job as well. But we, it just show, goes to show all the wonderful things that are happening right here in our schools. Um, and the credit goes to you, um, and to, uh, and also to the leadership of our school. So, um, thank you so much and, um, I hope you all enjoy, um, your, your time off.
Thank you. Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also a very happy birthday. I know you always tell me you look much younger than I do. But you still, you look, you look very good and a happy birthday to you. Um. First of all, I want to thank, um. Our Board of Ed staff and Dr. Thompson, you make our job so much easy. And I appreciate everything that you all do for us in guiding us and, um, and our work here on the board. I happened to be over at the middle school today and I saw all these wonderful young people coming in from the elementary schools. Taking tours of the middle school and of course, many of them looked nervous, but, um, it was nice to see the transition. From the elementary grades going into the middle school and they all had expectations and hopefully they enjoyed their tour today. Yes, we've had a lot of wonderful events in the last couple of weeks. I was able to go to the cultural event over the high school and tasting all that delicious food. And of course, um, the Harmony Concert, the Spring Concert tomorrow night, the Academic Awards. And hopefully for those who have not been able to make it, um, they can watch those events on Bloomfield Access TV. Lastly, want to wish everyone a very good and, uh, happy and healthy and safe summer. And we look forward to seeing you all in September. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. For all those messages of happy birthday, I do appreciate it and yes, today is my birthday. I, um. I was speaking to a class at the middle school. Probably twenty, twenty-plus years ago. And, uh, student asked me, how old are you, Mr. Harris? And I said, old. And they said, no, tell us how old you are. And I told them, I said, I was born the day before D-Day. And they said, uh, well, what's D-Day? And I said, that's your homework assignment. Go to the library, go to your computer and find out what D-Day was. But D-Day was June sixth nineteen forty-four. And it was the day of the invasion of the beaches of Normandy. And, uh. So for those of you trying to figure out, that means I'm seventy-eight years old today. But even more astounding to me sometimes is, uh. When I speak at graduation, a little, the three-minute speech that they give me to make. On Monday. And most of you know, I graduated from Bloomfield High School. But I graduated from Bloomfield High School in nineteen sixty-two. So on Monday the thirteenth, that'll be sixty years ago. That I walked the hallways of the small gym, the only gym we had at that time. And, uh, so it's, for me, it's been a labor of love. And, uh. I'm trying to get to as many, uh, functions as I can. Krista will be sending out to, uh, to board members, those that may not have had it or may have lost it. Just the number of retirement parties and things that are left, uh, before the end of the school year. I think it's important that you, um. Remember that the high school graduation is Monday at ten o'clock. At the Yardbirds, uh, Stadium, Dunkin' Donuts Stadium. So Monday the thirteenth at ten AM. And, uh, Jem's parents, uh, the Jem's graduation will be at the high school. In the courtyard like they had last year at three o'clock on thirteenth. So, uh, it, it's been a good year, even with all of the, uh, craziness of COVID. But, uh. I'm looking forward to some rest time and getting ready to, uh. Hit the, hit the boards hard in, uh, September with a new school year. So, uh. And my fellow board members, I know I'll see you around and, uh, we may even have a meeting or two in between there. So, if, uh, for those I will not see, have a great, have a wonderful summer and, uh. We will, I'll see you around. Mr. Ike? Is there a second? Okay, we are adjourned.
Good evening.
Good evening.